This says that it is six o'clock and I will call the September fifteenth special meeting of the Bastrop Planning and Zoning Commission to order. We have an announcement, we have an introduction of a new member of the staff. Ms. Karyn Pa?
Karen, Karen Ba.
Karen Ba.
She's our new Assistant Director of Planning and Development. She started Monday, so she's already become an expert on everything.
She knows all the answers, right?
Yes, exactly. Do you want to give you a little bit of your background?
Tell us where you came from and what your experiences are.
Okay, well, good evening Chair and Commissioners. Happy to be here, I'm Karen Ba. I am a planner and I've been a planner for about the past fifteen years. I'm a graduate of Florida Atlantic University. I started my planning career in Florida and I did some planning in Georgia and most recently in Shinglan in Missouri City and I'm so happy to be here.
You're welcome.
I've done some urban, big city planning, suburban planning for the past eight years and now I'm in Bastrop, looking forward to see what's next.
You're welcome.
Welcome.
We're working with you.
Welcome.
Thank you ma'am. Item three, citizen comments, do we have any citizen comments?
Not at this time.
Thank you ma'am. We do have a quorum, we have three, four, five, six members present, so we do have a quorum. Item four, items for individual consideration, consider action to appoint a Planning and Zoning Commission member as its representative on the Historic Landmark Commission.
Yes, I've been instructed not to leave the meeting without a nomination.
I would nominate our newest member. No. I thought we had somebody else that agreed to do this last time.
Carrie.
I thought you did. I'll be happy to do it.
I think you said you'd consider it.
I said I would consider it. And if no one else has the time, then I'll make the time. We appreciate it.
We know you're busy.
Yes, we appreciate your. Everybody's busy. So, do we have to make a motion?
Yes, please, a motion and a second vote.
Motion, would you like to make a motion to appoint Pete as our representative on the HLC? Shall move?
Sure, yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? You are appointed unanimously, thank you for your willingness to serve. Item four B, hold public hearing and consider action on a subdivision variance from the B3 Code Technical Manual, Section 3.2.005, requiring all new lots to be a minimum of one acre in size for onsite sewer facilities and a subdivision variance from the 2018 International Fire Code, Appendix D, Section D 107.1, requiring a subdivision with more than thirty units or lots to have a secondary point of egress for Piney Ridge, Section One, Block A, replat of Lot 11, being 1.838 acres out of Piney Ridge subdivision located at TBD Post Oak Rim within the city limits of Bastrop, Texas, as shown in Exhibit A.
Good evening, so what we have tonight are two items on the agenda and the first one is to consider two variances to the subdivision regulations. What the specific request is, is to do a replat of an existing platted lot in the Piney Ridge subdivision, up on your screen is the lot in question, and the owners requested to subdivide it into two tracts, one of which would then be smaller than an acre. The total site is 1.838 acres. For the replat, per state law, there are several things that kick in, if a subdivision has residential deed restrictions and/or if the subdivision has been zoned, restricted down to single family in the last five years, it requires the replats to come before the Planning and Zoning Commission for consideration with a public hearing. And with variances, it also requires us to notify the surrounding property owners and hold a public hearing on the variances. So the first action we're talking, looking at tonight is for the variances. Just a little background, the Piney Ridge subdivision, this is off of Hoffman Road over on the east side of town. It was platted in three sections originally, Section One was originally platted with forty-nine lots in nineteen seventy-eight and then they came back with a replat a couple of years later that increased that forty-nine to a total of seventy-one units. Section Two was originally platted with thirteen lots in nineteen eighty and then a replat was filed to increase that to thirty-two lots and then Section Three was platted in nineteen eighty-one with sixty-five lots. So, and then over the years, various other replats and illegal deed divisions have happened that have created more lots in the subdivision and looking at our map today, there's a hundred and seventy individually owned parcels in this subdivision. I clipped the picture of it, all the lots in purple are the ones that are part of the subdivision and you can see there's several roads that go through the subdivision, but there's only one outlet that I circled there at the bottom, that's the ingress egress point onto Hoffman Road. All those other roads are dead ends and don't connect back outside of the subdivision. So, once you get in, the only way to come back out is on Hoffman Road. So, the first variance under consideration tonight is to the B3 Code Technical Manual, Section 3.2.005 and this was a new requirement with the B3 Code that to have septic on a lot in this, anywhere in our jurisdiction that we look, that we regulate subdivisions, that new lots must be greater than one acre in size to utilize onsite septic. The reasons why, one, with our code, we don't have a minimum lot size in the code, so you're able to subdivide lots down to a pretty small level. As you're subdividing to smaller lots, you're going from a more rural or suburban atmosphere to a more urban atmosphere and when you do that, one of the things we talk about a lot with subdivision is that we're promoting orderly development and the extension of utilities is one of those things that creates that orderly development when you have individual lots that all have onsite septic or wells, those are more points that can create environmental issues for septics or for wells. So, for septic, we are looking at requiring that you have to have at least an acre, which gives spacing for the septic systems and if you want to start getting smaller than that, you need to extend the sanitary sewer system, which is the public sewer system, to subdivide smaller than that. The second variance under consideration is to the International Fire Code. When you look at the history of kind of this Piney Ridge subdivision, we did not have the fire code adopted, obviously, in nineteen seventy-eight, but we have since adopted the fire code. We most recently updated the fire code in two thousand eighteen, well, in two thousand nineteen to the eighteen version, however, this restriction has been in for the last several iterations of the fire code that in order to have a development with more than thirty units or lots, you have to have more than one way in and out. So, you have to have at least two ways in and out that a fire apparatus vehicle can access. In this case, there's the only one access off Hoffman Estates. If you were, if that intersection is clogged, you know, everyone's trying to come out that one direction, or if there's an accident at that intersection, no one can exit the subdivision. So, while the subdivision already does violate that with a hundred and seventy lots, the goal is not to make the situation worse by continuing to subdivide down further. For this request, we notified eight property owners in the two-hundred-foot area around the property and we received two since that we wrote the staff report and both were opposed to the request. And so, tonight, the Planning and Zoning Commission needs to hold a public hearing and then consider, and staff is recommending a consideration to deny, and the fire chief is here too, if you have any questions specific to the fire hazard risks in this area. This is in the Lost Pines area, does have a lot of pine trees in that area, so if you have any questions for him and the applicant is here, if you have questions of them.
Thank you, do you have any, anyone have questions from Ms. Bills?
I have a question. So, there's only one road that allows access to this and I was looking at the map that you have here, is there any plan to connect any of those roads that are around it at any point in the future or?
Not, not at present, no.
Okay.
The closest connection that probably could be made is Mesquite Street.
Right, that's what I was going to ask.
I don't know if my planner works, my planner doesn't work on the screen. But Mesquite is, yeah, there's, there is some, still some city right-of-way there to a point, but we would have to still go through another private property owner's lots to get back to, I think it's Laura Lane. That would be the most straightforward route to get another way in and out.
Any?
Yes, I'd like to ask the chief, what do you think of the variance request?
Hello, how are you all? Chief Rosales with Bastrop Fire. So, this is just preventing another Tahitian-type scenario where during the two thousand eleven complex fire, we had Tahitian as the only exit during that complex for that area and so since then, the county has gone in and built out the Cola Vista exit in order to facilitate egress during a disaster such as flooding or fires. And so, this is again, preventing that. Piney Ridge is directly set in what we call WUI, or the Wildland Urban Interface. It is currently on our hazard mitigation plan for quite a hazard as far as fire goes that's only within the city limits. It is, when we look towards adopting the WUI code or the Wildland Urban Interface code in the future, this would definitely apply to this area. And so, it is a significant egress issue. We had a structure fire right there at the corner of Hoffman and Piney Ridge and it, basically, we had to lay hose across it and it shut down that whole deal and we had to actually direct people through somebody's U-turn to get them through the intersection. It was pretty cumbersome to get through there. So, yeah, so it is an issue, but again, it was developed previous to the codes and so you can't fault for what is currently there today, but the goal is to not make it worse and not continue and go forth, so. And again, we're just, that code is adopted and in order for us to, you know, circumvent it, we would have to come to you guys or the council.
Thank you.
Thank you, any other questions for the chief? Paula, do you have anything else?
Well, I think you all know how I feel about our fire code and we've had some serious fires, I wouldn't feel comfortable approving a variance because we do it for one, we've got to do it for all and I think we need to, actually, I think we need to beef up our fire code a little bit and we're building, this is right in the middle of those pine trees, so I agree, I agree with chief, this is significant risk, that'd be my, how I feel about it.
Pete? I just want to say I also agree with the chief. Since the applicant is here, would you like to address the commission? Please come to the mic and give us your name and address, please ma'am.
I'm Martha Miles, I'm the owner of this.
Can you pull the mic down a little bit because it's hard for the folks watching to.
Okay, sorry.
That's okay.
Martha Miles, I'm the owner of this one point eight acre tract. I moved here almost two years ago. My husband died and I wanted to be here near my son. I'm trying to build a home here and I want to sell point eight acres to my friend Tara. I'm way past the age of retirement, I work full-time every day, just like Tara does. I can't, I have been, I've been fighting the city for a year and a half about this. I fail to understand the logic in any of these ridiculous requirements. I and my builder have addressed every issue with logic. I've given you people everything but a pint of blood, which by the way, I'm still willing to give. I just want to build my house. As far as the septic situation is concerned, the city says you've got to have at least one acre to have a septic tank fine. My friend Tara on the point eight acres is perfectly willing to join the city sewer system, but it's not available in this area, so where's the logic in that? My son lives in this subdivision, as does the mayor. My son lives on point, a half an acre actually, right around the corner on Laura Lane from my lot. He just put in a brand-new septic system, on a half acre, no problems there, got a permit instantly. I fail to see, as far as ingress egress, two more people, myself and Tara, we're both single, how are two more people, two more cars going to impact severely the subdivision, create a traffic jam or anything else? I've been going to see my son for almost two years. Every time I go into this subdivision, I almost never see anyone, if I see one more car, it's a big deal. I just think that this entire situation is political nonsense, frankly. It makes no sense at all. I mean, if any of you can show me one logical reason why two more citizens in this subdivision would create any kind of a hazard in any way, I'd love, I'd love to hear it.
I don't think the issue here ma'am is two more citizens. What the issue is here is equal treatment for those who may come after you and want to do the same thing and it would create, it would not be advisable to do that. If you don't understand about the ingress and egress, it's because you weren't here in two thousand and eleven. When we had fire that was nipping at people's behinds, literally, and they were trying to get out of Tahitian, because there was basically only one way in and one way out, even though if you went in there during the day, you may not see very many cars, there were a lot of people that lived there. The septic doesn't give me as much heartburn as that ingress egress does.
Well, that's very poor planning on the part of the city, who has a lot of resources to create another exit.
Majority of that is in the city. Part of it is and a big chunk of it is not in the city.
I'm not concerned with anyone who may come after me, their children or their children, I'm concerned with me, with the here and now and so should you be. I mean, let's, let's deal with each case on a case-by-case basis on the here and now. What's going to happen next month or next year or ten years from now is not my concern and it shouldn't be yours. Deal with those issues as they arise.
That's not what.
Planning and.
Planning does, it's not what the city does, it's not what the city leaders have to do. We have to look forward and we have to look at equal treatment for all the landowners that may come after you.
Well, I don't know how everyone that lives in this subdivision managed to get past the Planning and Zoning Committee because many of them are just like me and would not have lived up to the rules and requirements that you now require, but yet they're there.
I'm not sure that's quite accurate ma'am. I'm not sure that's quite accurate.
Well.
And things that happen in the county are a lot looser than the things that happen within the city limits of Bastrop. And unfortunately for you, we have to deal with what is on the books.
Well, then the books need to be changed.
And we have to look at the future.
Well, I understand that and I'm all for the future too, you know, I'm trying to be a citizen of Bastrop, of Bastrop City in Bastrop County, a taxpaying citizen, I'm trying to add, not take away in any way. And I'm, I'm at an impasse here.
If ma'am.
I fail to understand any, any reasonability or any logic whatsoever in what is, what is at hand here.
So, if I might add, right, Bastrop is growing, it's constantly growing.
It's not going to grow with this kind of rules and regulations.
It, yes ma'am.
Excuse me ma'am, he speaks, he has the floor.
It's, it's still growing and I know there's plenty of land that's available in Piney Ridge as well as other spots and as long as we can make the right decisions to be able to safely get people in and out of the neighborhoods, that's what we're going to do. So, there, like you, we don't know, but our, part of our job is to plan and for the future and so there can be an influx of people that come into that neighborhood and we would still make the same call, be it one person or two persons, people, there, there's a chance that there might be ten families that move in there and we cannot allow for, we can't choose to say, hey, we're going to just let y'all come in because we don't think it's going to be an impact. We're trying to change some of the things from the past to make the future better. That's just pretty much what it is.
Well, again, I'm saying you ought to deal with these issues on a case-by-case basis, not on what your projections may be for the future and the, the many people who may be at the same podium with the same issue. You know, I'm trying to deal with the here and now and so should you.
Well, if, if anyone comes to us with the same, in your same situation, the same rules would apply to them. So, if we make a rule for you, we bend a rule, break a rule, give you a variance for you, then everybody that comes after you would want to know why they didn't get the same treatment.
And it might not even be the same variance, right? We might have to look at other issues, it just opens up a rabbit hole of options to give everybody outside of what we're trying to regulate.
Well, I don't have anything else to say, perhaps my friend Tara would like to speak because she's just as involved as I am.
Yes ma'am, would you like to speak? Give us your name and your address.
My name is Tara Ferguson.
Well, come to the mic please so people can hear you.
My name is Tara Ferguson, I live at 213 Hidden Springs here in Bastrop. I've been for about ten years, I did have family, close friends during the fire as a matter of fact. I just hope I can add a little bit of reasoning to this. You're saying an acre, we're, it's like a few feet lack of being an acre and I understand, you know, the, the fire hazard, you know, such as what he explained, but here's the thing, so if it had a few more feet, we would be able to build, correct? Am I right?
I think the bigger issue that we're addressing here mainly has to do with egress and in and out of the neighborhood and adding more people into that neighborhood with only one way in and out, more so than probably the one acre requirement for a septic tank or whatever. We haven't even really gotten into that, I don't think, I think mainly looking at entrances and exits out of that neighborhood which are sparse.
Okay, so my second point is, if it was a full acre, I don't think we would be here, there, he wouldn't be here, the, the fire chief, or we would be here even discussing about the egress because it would be allowed to be built on, correct?
As I've said before, we have to be very careful when we're doing things like this because if you got the variance, why can't somebody down the road get a variance?
Okay, but I'm just saying, if it, if it was the full acre though, I don't think we would have to get permission to even be here to talk about it.
We haven't even addressed that issue yet ma'am.
Okay.
And with, with everything that, that's coming in, right, that's being built, we're always going to look at the egress, always.
Okay, well, this is a cul-de-sac, there's cul-de-sacs everywhere, I mean, I just want to kind of picture you, you know, the, the envision here, it's, it's a cul-de-sac, it's not just one street going in and out, there's just a few neighbors around there, I don't really see too many more people moving in over there, it's her property that she's wanting to share.
It's not necessarily over there, it, this will affect the entire subdivision. I think the chief has something he may want to add.
I was going to answer her question, so about the one acre, so it, the reason we're here is because of this, the replat, right, the subdivision replat, that's why we're here, as far as the egress goes, so the egress is, what triggered the egress issue is the re, the re.
Exactly.
The re-subdivision of that.
The replat, yeah.
That's what's triggered, so we're, so if we, let's say we had one hundred and seventy lots and we're taking it and making it one hundred and seventy-one lots, that's the reason for the egress, like, we're, the one acre is specific to the septic, it doesn't have anything to do with the egress.
Correct.
So, I want to make sure, does that clear up your, your question?
It's just, I'm not understanding, if I was buying one full acre of property over there, I would just buy it, I wouldn't even meet any of you guys and we would just build. Of course, we would get mail department and the rest of it, but.
Well, hang on.
So, this lot, so with all the codes we have adopted, we've, we have delved into this, so if it's a platted lot that's existed since the subdivision, it's already there, they can build on it. So, the one point eight three acres, she can build a house, one house and be fine, it won't trigger, we don't have any codes that say you can't build that house because the lot, it was platted legally. What, what's stopping is, is that we're trying to make it two lots now and now two houses and that, since the situation's changing, we can't, that's what's before you all tonight is to give a variance to that, but if Ms. Miles were to come back with just one house and put install, one, it would meet the septic, but two, it would meet the, we, we don't have any codes that would stop. So, any of the vacant lots that are in the subdivision today, they could be built on, but any of those lots, if you, those are occupied lots, if you want to split them into more lots, that's what the P and Z has to look at each time with a variance, so.
Do you know if there are any other lots in there that are under an acre?
Yes, there are, there are, there are probably about thirty lots that are under an acre, but the majority of the lots in the subdivision are one to five acres.
But people could still build?
Yes, and they can still build, yes.
Okay, but they couldn't get sewer?
No, there's no, this, the closest sewer line is back at Hoffman Road and ninety-five, that's the closest sewer line.
So, they would be facing the same issues?
Yes, so, so they would be able to, because if it's, as long as it's over an acre or over half an acre, because TCQ won't, won't let you build if it's less than half an acre.
Right.
So, they have, so anything that's half an acre to an acre is grandfathered in essentially under our code, but when you're creating new situations, you're creating a new, new lot, now, now that's when we have to consider the changing.
And it's a lot that only lacks a few feet of being one acre, just a few feet.
So, we would, we would be dealing with this egress issue even if it was, both lots were two acres, it's.
Correct. The egress, the egress issue, yeah, if, if you have a five acre lot and you're making it into five one acre lots, we're still going to have that same egress variance that needs to come before you all, they wouldn't have to come for the, the, the septic variance.
So, all of them would come up under, for the egress, is that what I'm understanding?
If you replat, yes. Don't replat, keep it the way it is, you can build your house.
Well, it's not mine, it's ours.
If you, this is the, this is why, we're planning our new rules, the minute you replat, all the new rules apply and I can't believe the engineer said, he didn't think life, safety and health.
That what?
Code wouldn't apply. When he tried to, I read the letter from the engineer and didn't think it was a big deal about not having two means of egress from the fire code.
Well, there's cul-de-sacs everywhere, I mean it's.
It's still one way in, one way out and, and that's, that's a fact and so, that's a, that's a life safety code, I would never go against that and as a professional, he should know better and so, that's no variance, you can't get variances from those kind of things. You can get a variance from a full acre to a half acre on, on a septic, but that's no life safety in there, there's other things, but, so this is a big deal, the fire is a big deal for me.
Okay, so because it's lacking a few feet, we're being stopped from building there.
That's true.
It's.
That's true.
Okay, and it's a cul-de-sac that was already established, I mean, we can't change it, I mean, unless there's some sort of plan.
Don't change it, that's correct.
That's going to be able to put a rope through there.
If you don't change it, if you don't change it, then there's no replat, that's what the chief was saying.
Mm-hmm.
If you don't replat, it doesn't trigger. If you don't replat, it doesn't trigger all of the new reviews. That's it.
Well, I guess there's no arguing with y'all then. I mean, you've got your minds set up, so I appreciate you taking the time.
Thank you. At this time, I will open a public hearing. Is there any one, other than those who have already addressed the commission, who wish to speak?
No one signed up.
In that case, I will close the public hearing.
I got a question. Were we going to consider both variances? Are both, are one each and...
I would like to ask the planning director.
You can consider them separately.
We can consider them separately. I still have a concern about opening up fair treatment for everybody, but it's really close to an acre. It's really close to an acre.
Isn't it a moot point if, if you don't have the egress and it's not a replat, isn't it a moot point whether or not the septic is...
I don't think it's a moot point.
I will say, the applicant does have the ability to appeal the decision of P and Z to city council, so that is, that may be the next step that this goes. So if P and Z wishes to take action on one and not the other, you know, or take different actions, that's an option, so.
I have a concern about it being slightly less than an acre. If we go with slightly less of an acre this time, I believe that we're going to have to go with slightly less acre next time. And, you know, who's to say that we're then going to like, have to look at 7, .7 acres rather than .8? I mean, I just think that it sets us up for future problems moving forward.
I have a response to that. If TCEQ is okay with half an acre, should we be okay with half an acre? I'm okay with half an acre if TCEQ is okay with half an acre, because I can say, they're going to allow that, and they're all over the Colorado River. So I would think, to me, that's less of a concern, but I wouldn't go less than half an acre.
Well, when we think about the city building sustainably, is it going to work if everybody who needs a septic system can build on half an acre? It's not just this one subdivision, and it's not just, you know, to me, it has to do with thinking about how we build the city sustainably, or how the city moves forward sustainably. And with water issues being like they are, I'm just not sure that it, that it's healthy for the city, for us to consider changing the rules.
How many, what is, first of all, what is the city's reason for requiring an acre as opposed to the TCEQ and requirement? And how many lots do we have that are not connected to the sewer? If we can get an idea.
For the second question, for lots that aren't connected to the sewer system, everything in Piney Ridge is on septic, anything that's out there. Trying to think of the other subdivisions. Most of what's in the city limits, unless it's really older property, I think there's still some off of Hasler and Perkins, that area of town, that predate our sewer system down there. But for the most part, most things in the city limits are, there may be a few in the Tahitian Village area, so. But most are on either the city systems or the WCID over in Tahitian.
I have a question as well. How many homes that are in the subdivision currently are under an acre that have, that are under an acre?
I don't have that exact number. I looked at the number of lots that were under the acre, but not, half an acre, but not which ones were occupied, so.
So being that they're in the ETJ, right, and eventually...
This is in the city limits.
Okay, so they're in the city limits. So eventually, we're going to move our piping, our connection, out that direction to tap into the city?
We don't have any plans in our capital improvement plans at this time to go that direction.
Right now, can, if you had two acres, is there a limit as far as how many houses you could put on there?
Yes, there are, TCQ has limits on, I believe you can't connect more than three houses to one septic system, and there's a gallons per day maximum you can have on one lot per TCQ before you have to go through their process as a commercial property.
And that's probably going to be based on the amount of area that you could air rate?
It's area, and it's 5,000 gallons per day, so like, there's a limit, so...
There's a math problem to solve.
Yeah, it's math, it's a math problem, and then, and we wouldn't, if you were to subdivide down past a half an acre, or, we wouldn't be able to issue a permit. TCQ wouldn't allow us to issue a permit on less than half an acre that is not grandfathered, that was not predating codes.
Assuming you stay with the current, don't replat, I would think the math would work out, that's enough area to run a system for two potentially houses. I mean, there's no, the limits from number of houses.
Yeah, they could probably get, put two units on one septic in that area.
Put two units on that.
With that subdivision. And with the new, with the P2 zoning district, you can have up to three units per lot.
Okay, so it could be developed, and it could have a septic system, it just can't be replat?
Yes, because if you replat, then, again, each lot would be able to have three units per lot, now you're at six units, so.
And again, if you can refresh my memory, are there, are there any plans on trying to get a second entrance and exit out of there?
Not today, no. We've looked at potential routes. I will say the, my calculator doesn't work on the screen, but the subdivision is half in the city limits, half out. So if you're looking at kind of the northern part, we'd have to, that would be a county project. The Mesquite Street one would be the one that would be a city project.
So would this essentially bring up a denial for potential residents of that community?
Any new subdivision, yes.
Any new subdivision, okay.
If it's an already platted lot that's essentially grandfathered, predates, was legally platted, or, you know, meets the code requirements of its day, we can't deny them a building permit. But what we're discussing now is a replat, so creating additional lots.
Okay.
So let me recap. If it's not replatted, they could build, that, the, there is enough land there to build two homes or to develop the property and build two homes there. That's correct?
Assuming, yeah.
I'm just saying what else...
Got some topo, but yeah, they could do that.
They can do what? And you think that would be a possibility to run a sewer system that would take care of two homes out there?
A septic system, yeah. They could install a septic system that would allow for two units.
So that is an option?
That is, yes.
Okay, thank you.
And I have another question. So if we don't replat, does that affect the egress and ingress problem? I mean, does it trigger that as well, or can they put...
Well, the problem is they are period already, because there's only one way in and one way out. So this would be, there's nothing we can do about that right now. We don't want to subdivide down so much that we have twice as many units out there and twice as many people.
I understand, but if they don't, if they don't, if we don't replat, they put two homes on one property.
Right.
They don't have a problem with a septic.
Right.
Do we still have an issue with people getting in and out of that neighborhood?
Sure.
In terms of...
Yeah, so, so let me, so the, yes, so the number of people could still expand, right? So there's still an egress issue, but the fire code does not allow you to retro back or go backwards on any grandfathered properties. So they're kind of what we call existing noncompliant, a neighborhood or subdivision that's existing that's noncompliant with the fire code. All we can regulate is anything new or any changes that are significant enough to trigger the fire code, i.e. a subdivision or a replat, right? So those are triggering the new codes. So as long as they don't touch it, then essentially, yes, they can continue because they're grandfathered. But the egress issue is still there, and it's still going to be there, matter if you build two houses, 10 houses on the lot, whatever it is, right? The egress issue is still there until the city or developer or somebody comes in and puts in a second egress. Does that answer your question? The international fire code, the residential code, and the building code, the WUI code, all of those are not retroactive codes. They're only from here forward, or if you make significant, and those are outlined within the code, whether it's like, could be a subdivision, could be a replat, could be a remodel, it could be a, I'm trying to think of some other ones. There's tons of different variations within the code that tell you when those codes trigger. Okay?
Any other questions or any further discussion? If not, I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we deny both variances.
Motion on the floor to deny both variances. Is there a second?
A second.
Motion and a second. Would you please call the roll?
Pablo Serna?
Aye.
Scott Long?
Aye.
Debbie Moore?
Yes.
Ishmael Harris?
Yes.
Judah Ross?
Aye.
Patrice Parsons?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. And once again, if you don't replat, there's not a problem. Item 4C, hold public hearing and consider action on replat with variances for Piney Ridge and Block 1, Section 1, Block A, replat of Lot 11, being 1.838 acres out of Piney Ridge subdivision located at TBD Post Oak Rim within the city limits of Bastrop, Texas, is shown on Exhibit A.
Yeah, so this was the actual replat that would have divided it into the two lots. So I put this on, you know, if the variances had passed, we would have recommended approval. Without the variances, we recommend denial of the replat.
Got you. Item number five.
Do you still take action?
Oh, I'm sorry. I will, I forgot. Shame on me. I will open a public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to speak?
Not at this time.
If not, I will close the public hearing, and I will entertain a motion. Do I have to entertain a motion since...
Well, to take formal action on it, so it's still, they still had a request for a replat, so.
Okay.
Motion to deny.
Is there a motion, the motion to deny is second. All in favor of denial? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes to deny. Can I get it right that time? Keep me straight, please, ma'am. Item five. Is there a motion?
I wanted to say...
Oh, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to say, just for the record...
Put your mic on, please.
Just wanted to say for the record, that things that involve fire, health, safety, welfare are never reasons to approve a variance. I think that's like 101. So when I saw that, I really wanted to understand. I'm glad chief made it here to kind of give us some background, because it is, we don't want to put our firefighters in a situation where they're having to deal with that and put out a fire. So I hear the story. It's, my heart goes out to that situation, but we as a board can't be approving those kind of variances.
And it is the job of this board and the council and all the other boards to look at Bastrop not only now, but in the future, and how any changes would affect those that come in the future, so.
And I would also like to add that I believe that, you know, we need to take our job seriously when it comes to protecting the citizens of this city, and, you know, allowing for a variance like this would, I think, set a very, it would set a position that I think we would regret at some point in time.
I also think that, you know, a lot of the stuff that was done in the '70s, '80s, kind of Wild West days of before a lot of development was coming here, there was a lot of stuff that people got away with. And so based, you know, when someone comes in and says, well, they did it back then or then, well, that kind of doesn't matter anymore, because planning going forward, and that's what we're here for, is to make sure that we don't end up in situations like this down the road with a giant 170-home neighborhood with, you know, one way in and out.
One way in and one way out, yeah.
Doesn't, doesn't sit well with me.
Yeah, it was just by the grace of God that nobody got hurt in 2011 trying to get out of Tahitian. Anyway, anyone else have anything to say? We'll move on to item five, then. Is there a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody.